The regular meeting of the Aurora City Council for Monday, August twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty five is called to order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kaufman.
There.
Councilmember Bergen.
Here.
Councilmember Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Hancock.
Here.
Councilmember Jurenski.
Here.
Councilmember Kasaw.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Mario.
Present.
Mayor Proton Sundberg.
Here.
There's a quorum.
Please join me in an invocation. O Lord our God, and O Father, we come to you, and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight to keep us safe and guide us in our decisions. Bless our city with honorable citizens, industries, sound education, and good government. Unite our community together, even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give the City Council and citizens the wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the help of our community. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the liberty and justice for all.
Executive session update. During executive session, we discussed economic development incentive and real property transaction. Motion is in order for the approval of the minutes for August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Mayor Protem Sundberg, seconded by.
Hancock.
Second by Councilmember Kasaw to approve the minutes for August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the minutes for August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five.
Mayor Kaufman.
Katie, I'm a yes.
Mayor votes yes.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Yes, Katie, I'm a yes, Hancock.
Bergen is a yes that did not come up yet.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember.
Councilmember Medina is a yes.
I'm a yes as well, Katie.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the August eleventh City Council meeting minutes.
A motion is in order for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
I'm sorry, was that Councilmember Hancock? Moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by.
Mayor second.
Second by Councilmember Lawson to adopt the agenda. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
Point of border mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Just for all of us on eScribe, I had to exit and then then go back in, and now it's working.
Okay. Next question before us is the adoption of the consent count. I'm sorry.
Here, I still I still need Councilmember Hancock, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, and Councilmember Medina.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the agenda.
Next question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. Item number nine C one.
Mayor Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen.
A motion to approve nine C one.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Seconded by.
Councilmember Kasaw. Is there a discussion?
Mayor Jurenski.
Councilmember Jurenski.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, this is to open for interviews and applications, correct, Katie?
No, this one is the consideration to appoint one member to the Historic Preservation Commission. So the commission is asking for council to appoint Matthew Gordon.
Wonderful, wonderful. That is exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
But, yes.
Further discussion? I see none. Call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. Item number nine C one.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor votes yes.
Hancock votes yes.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
The next item before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten B three. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
A motion to approve ten A one through ten B three.
Second, Jurenski.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by Councilmember Jurenski to approve item number ten A one to ten B three of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Discussion? Seeing none, call for the call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances, item number ten A one to ten B three.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Member Medina.
Yes.
Councilmember Hancock.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the resolutions and ordinances consent calendar.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number eleven A?
Item eleven A is public hearing consideration of ordinance two thousand and twenty five eighty three, initially zoning a parcel of land measuring two hundred and forty-two acres, more or less located north of East fifty-sixth Avenue and west of future Hayes Mount Road and two miles east of Jackson Gap Street to Airport District and amending the zoning map accordingly.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff. Is there a presentation by staff?
Mayor through you. This is Brandon Camerata with the Planning Department, and I'm looking for Ariana Muka, but I'll go ahead and make a quick presentation. This is a initial zoning associated with an annexation. Ari, you say you're here. Do you want to go ahead and jump on?
Yes. Sorry, City Council and Mayor, I was just getting online. I have a presentation to share. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Ariana Muka, and I'm presenting for staff. The applicant is Airport Logistics LLC, and they are requesting a zoning map amendment for the initial zoning to Airport District AD of approximately two hundred and forty-two acres. The site is currently zoned Agriculture A three in Adams County. The site is located north of E fifty-sixth Ave and west of future Hayes Mount Road. The proposal is approximately two miles east of Jackson Gap Street, and the parcel and surrounding properties are mostly undeveloped. The site is bordered to the north and west by unincorporated land in Adams County. The city of Aurora bounds the parcel to the south and east with Airport District AD zoning. The zoning map amendment received a recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission in July twenty-three, in July, on July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Staff also recommends approval as the site complies with the requirements of Code Section one forty-six dash five dot four dot one dot C of the City of Aurora's Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed initial zoning is supported by Aurora Places as part of the industrial hub place type and will contribute to the economic and fiscal success of the city. The potential size, scale, and height of the proposed initial zoning in the Airport District is compatible with the surrounding land usage. The property is currently vacant, therefore there is no dislocation of tenants or occupants. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. We also have the applicant and attendance for further questions.
Very well. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Not today, sir.
Is there? Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Are there any questions from from council members to staff or the applicant? I see none. The public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve eleven A.
Removed by Member Jim Sundberg, seconded by.
Jurenski.
Seconded by Councilmember Jurenski to approve item number eleven A discussion. I see no discussion, and I call for the question on the adoption of item number eleven A.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Thank you. Councilmember Hancock.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item eleven A.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number eleven B?
Eleven B is public hearing consideration of ordinance two thousand and twenty five eighty-four, amending the two thousand and eighteen comprehensive plan to adopt by reference the Colfax and Thirteenth Avenue Station area plan.
A presentation by staff.
You have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearing is now open. A presentation by staff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Daniel Krasnowski with the City's Planning Department. I've got a short presentation. This is an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan to adopt an updated Colfax and Thirteenth Avenue Station area plan. The previous plan was done in two thousand and nine, and this is simply an update to that plan to better reflect city's codes, policies, and development in the area. You'll have me just a moment. For the benefit of council and others in the audience, the area we're looking at is about one hundred and eighty-seven acres in area located in north central Aurora along Colfax Avenue. It includes the Colfax Avenue Station and the Thirteenth Avenue Station, and is adjacent to the Andrews Medical Campus and a number of established neighborhoods. Like I mentioned, the presentation. Sorry, hold on. Apologies. The station was originally planned in two thousand and nine. That plan is now about fifteen years old and is in need of updating to reflect the current zoning, planning, and honestly, a lot of the development that's occurred since the two thousand and nine plan. It also provides an opportunity to support an urban renewal plan to activate near-term development opportunities. So this updated plan really just reaffirms the vision for the area as a mixed-use transit-oriented development area, provides streamlined and more effective zoning and development standards in the plan, and will serve as a foundation for that urban renewal plan that will provide necessary infrastructure to take advantage of some of those near-term development opportunities. I'm happy to answer any questions about the content of the plan, but because this is a comp plan amendment, it does require a public hearing, and the City Council may approve an amendment to the comp plan by a vote of not less than two-thirds of the entire membership. And this is the fairly straightforward criteria for approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there? Is there an applicant in this?
The city of the applicants.
Okay. Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
No.
Questions of staff? I see none. The public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Kasaw.
Yeah, motion to approve item number eleven B.
It's moved by Councilmember Kasaw, seconded by.
Jurenski.
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Jurenski. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number eleven B.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Katie, I'm a yes, Hancock.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item eleven B.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number twelve A?
Item twelve A is introduction of ordinance two thousand and twenty five eighty-five, delegating to the city manager the authority to appoint and remove the court administrator.
Motion is in order. I'm going to recognize Councilmember Gardner.
Mayor, motion to approve twelve A.
Moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by.
Coombs.
I'm sorry, seconded by.
Coombs.
Seconded by Councilmember Coombs. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve A.
Katie, I'm a no, Jurenski.
Katie, I'm a yes, Hancock.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Jurenski, Kasaw, and Mayor Proton Sundberg to adopt item twelve A.
Would the clerk now please read the title to item number thirteen A?
Item thirteen A is finalizing of ordinance two thousand and twenty five seventy-two, eliminating the independent review board.
Presentation by staff.
Mayor, this is the second reading. We discussed this at the last meeting. The independent review board is a board that that has not functioned in a while. It's essentially defunct. We don't have current membership, and council had initially voted to eliminate it as part of the overall effort to consolidate and reduce the number of boards and commissions. I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Questions of staff, city manager. I see none. Motion is in order.
Mayor Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen.
A motion to approve thirteen A.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number thirteen A. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of item number thirteen A.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Katie, I'm a yes, Hancock.
The motion passes with nine yes votes, one no vote from Councilmember Medina to adopt item thirteen A.
Would now please read the title to item number thirteen B?
Item thirteen B is finalizing of ordinance two thousand and twenty five seventy-three, eliminating the Human Relations Commission. Mayor, we do have two individuals who'd like to speak on this item.
Very well.
First is Aaron. Aaron, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. My words may not matter tonight, but I remember they once did. Four years ago, I posted a satirical take on my personal social media page, and it caught attention. Around that same time, I was serving my second term on the Human Relations Commission because of my passion for the work. Work I'd already begun while collaborating with MSU Denver's DEI office. I was proud to serve on the HRC to carry forward the vision of my grandmother and Dr. Vannister, who helped establish it back in nineteen eighty-three, along with Mayor Kaufman. They understood then what is still true today, that Aurora thrives when we center community engagement and respect for all. Now in two thousand and twenty-five, we are debating whether to erase that legacy. Councilmember Kasaw recently said that the HRC's work overlaps with other commissions, but if the overlap is a concern, why are commissions like golf not being questioned, even though they intersect with Parks and Open Space or Councilmember Lawson's Civic Engagement Commission, an excellent idea that could be seen as overlapping with the Aurora Leadership Program? Overlap has never been a reason to dismantle a commission, so why now and why this one? I understand some of you may still hold frustration with me for a past post. I regret it if my words words ever caused offense, and I offer my heartfelt heartfelt apologies. But tonight, this decision is not about me. It's about whether Aurora will stand by its commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equity, or whether fear and political pressure by a bully will cost our city a commission that has done extraordinary work for more than thirty years. I know many of you may feel you've already made up your minds. I also know that sometimes it's difficult to stand up to the loudest voices in the room, but I ask you from the bottom of my heart to reconsider. Vote to honor the legacy of those who built this city with compassion. Vote to protect Aurora's promise of belonging for everyone. Vote to save the Human Relations Commission.
Is that it?
Yes, that is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is Amy. Amy, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Amy, and I chair the Human Relations Commission. This week I wanted to focus on data and provide a cost-benefit perspective regarding the Human Relations Commission, even though I'm well aware this is not a financial issue but a retaliatory issue. Based on available budget information and a high-end estimate of forty-three dollars an hour for city partner labor, total annual cost of the HRC is approximately twelve thousand dollars. This includes the budget allocation and an estimated three hours per month of staff support. With eight HRC members participating in monthly meetings where we engage with nonprofits, discuss community concerns, and plan initiatives, we contribute roughly twenty-four hours per month in meeting time. Using the same hourly rate of forty-three dollars an hour, this equates to one thousand thirty-two dollars a month, or twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars annually in volunteer value. In addition to meetings, HRC members support numerous city events. A conservative estimate of time spent at events such as Pride, Global Fest, National Night Out, Health Jam, Higher Sharp Events, the Holocaust Remembrance, and Martin Luther King Day events totals approximately one hundred and forty-five hours annually. This translates to six thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars in volunteer labor. Altogether, the combined value of the HRC volunteer hours through meetings and events totals eighteen thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars annually. Compared to the estimated cost of twelve thousand, this represents a savings for the city of six thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. This figure does not include additional time we spend preparing for events, coordinating with nonprofits, or engaging directly with community members. The HRC plays a vital role in building bridges, fostering community connections, and representing Aurora's commitment to its diverse population. HRC does the work. We don't just show up for photo ops or to garner kudos. We are passionate and dedicated to our community members. A few additional initiatives I wanted to highlight that I missed last meeting, that we provided our school resource officers with care kits to keep at their offices to help them build relationships with students. These included stacks and other items. We also donated to APD to fund the new Blue Backpack program to help APD in their interactions with neurodivergent community members. To quote Councilmember Kasaw from a July twelfth email sent to the HRC, "Thank you so much for reaching out and of course, for doing such a fantastic job engaging with the community. Your commitment to bringing people together is truly appreciated. Please continue to do the great work. We are here to support each other in building a stronger and more connected community. Now's the time to act and live up to the words that you state. Save the HRC, put the personal vendettas inside, and do the right thing. Consider your community members." Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve item thirteen B, Jurenski.
It's removed by Councilmember Jurenski, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock. I would like to offer an amendment that for the Veterans Committee, where they were, Veterans Commission, where they were going to be eliminated, Councilmember Bergen intervened with an amendment to have them meet quarterly for cost savings, and so I would offer the same amendment for the HRC, for the Aurora Human Relations Commission. Requires a second.
Mayor, I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
Councilmember Coombs can take it.
Okay.
It's okay. It's okay. You can let Councilmember Lawson take it.
Moved by Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Lawson.
Mayor, I have a concern, Sundberg. In recent meeting minutes from the HRC, they had given away two thousand dollars to a an attorney-type group. We as a council are not giving away that kind of money from regularly, so that is within their bylaws. I think that the bylaws need to be reexamined, so these efforts align with our own city council budget and allocations.
And Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen.
I understand they also had a candidate forum, but it was very partisan with only one political side invited.
Mayor, Councilmember Jurenski.
Councilmember Jurenski.
I would strongly urge a no vote against your amendment. I think that the intended purpose of this commission is no longer the case. The first speaker got on and said that he felt bad and even apologized for some very negative language that he has used towards council members, but has yet shown that behavior over the course of several years now. over the course of several years now. Um, it is absolutely unacceptable for a, a committee member of, of any committee, um, to be so publicly, um, you know, a, a, and disrespectful, quite frankly, towards council members in their role, um, as a human relations commissioner. I would also like to point to the May seventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, meetings of the Human Relations Commission. Um, first of all, uh, they did promote a candidate event. They said it was going to be on this Friday at Parkside Eatery. Well, that was for specific council candidates. Um, this commission has become absolutely partisan. It has become a commission geared towards activism. Um, it has become a commission that goes against everything that we as a council have stood for, have voted for. Uh, Councilmember Lawson, you, you first brought forward in twenty seventeen that we were not, we are not a sanctuary city, and I appreciate that. I doubled down on that, you know, last year and, and reiterated that we are not a sanctuary city, and we will do nothing in this city, you know, to, to stand in the way of, of, you know, federal, uh, law enforcement agencies to do, doing their job. But this commission, as part of these minutes, they ordered food and drinks. They spent, they voted unanimously to spend two hundred and fifty dollars on snacks to have a know your rights event update, essentially to help people evade law enforcement, which is an exact policy of a sanctuary city, which we are not. This commission has turned totally, totally to activism, to hatred, to divisiveness, supporting everything, everything that this council goes against, that this council has voted for, that this council has stood for. This council, th- this commission has been hijacked. They have cherry picked who they want to be on this commission and who they don't. Uh, again, ju- just alone, in these meeting minutes from May seventh, for them to promote a council candidate event, this is not their role. This is not their role. To promote sanctuary policies? This is not their role. We are not a sanctuary city. Everything that this commission has turned into is, is, is activism, hatred, and divisiveness. I encourage my colleagues to vote no on this amendment. This is not a friendly amendment. This is not a friendly commission. I strongly encourage my colleagues to vote no and to vote yes tonight to eliminate this commission.
Uh, I think a question.
Mayor.
I have a question first for, uh, the city manager, and that is that, um, how many, uh, how does the appointment process work? It works like any other board or commission, does it not? For the member, individual members?
Yes, members of the, uh, Human Relations Commission are appointed by, um, a majority of council.
And how long are the terms for this?
Uh, three-year terms.
Three-year terms. Well, I think we ought to be careful about who we appoint, uh, for this.
Mayor.
And we could always do a resolution to, to give, to provide a mission statement for, uh, this particular board or commission. Uh, Councilmember Coombs, and then, and then.
Yeah, just a couple of different things. Um, for one, yes, uh, commissioners serve at the pleasure of council, which also means that they can be removed by council. Council has actually removed various members of various commissions, for one. So if folks don't like who's on there, that's a different conversation than the commission existing at all. Second of all, um, Mr. Futrell has not been on this commission in two years. So if you're trying to say that his behavior is a reason to abolish this commission, he's not even on this commission. Um, third of all is that, well, for APD attended the know your rights training, and I think it's important to be really clear what know your rights training is. It's making sure people understand their legal rights. So saying that that's not within the mi- mission of the city, um, that that's not aligned with the city, it is absolutely our responsibility to support our community members in appropriately exercising their legal rights. And that is what a know your rights training is for. So to make these things a supposedly divisive, what was divisive was the commentary that has happened, um, on this subject. Um, right? These are not actions that we should be painting as somehow wrong or horrible. Um, it is important that our community members understand their legal rights when we live in a diverse community, um, where people may be subject to unique legal situations. We should be making sure that they know their legal rights, um, and that's not sanctuary policy to make sure people know their legal rights.
If I could just ask one quick question, uh, to the city manager real quick, and then Councilmember Lawson. And that is that I don't recall, I mean, it's not like the C A B C, I know who my appointments are, the C A B C. Are we allocated appointments on the Human Relations Commission or how are these people appointed?
No, there, again, the only two, um, boards or commissions that council appoints directly, and you each have a direct appointee, are both, uh, the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee and the Business Advisory Board, so the B A B, C A B C. Other than that, all other boards or commissions are consensus appointments from councilmen.
Uh, that ought to change, I think. Uh, Councilmember Lawson. Uh, you're, you're muted.
You're muted.
Mayor, I don't think I was next. I think it was Councilmember Gardner. I don't want to take this advice. I see what I have to say.
Councilmember Gardner.
Uh, so this whole process started because council directed staff to consolidate and or eliminate boards and commissions to save money. Um, that's clearly not what this is because all the rest of the eliminations that were up for a vote last time, none of them moved forward other than the IRB. Um, it, based upon the reasons given tonight, this is clearly retribution. Um, and, you know, we have the ability to control the bylaws. We have the capability to control who sits on the commission. So if we don't like those things, change them. But to single out one board and commission for elimination under the guise of efficiency is disingenuous at best. And so I, I mean, I'll, I would support keeping it in its current format like we have the rest. Um, but at the very least, we'll support your amendment, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so let me just get to Councilmember Jorinsky, since she always likes to call me out and, and let the public just say what they want to say. First of all, I am not for sanctuary cities. So, um, you could put that out and you could say whatever you want to say, Councilmember Jorinsky. You got people attack me. I don't really care because I know what I, what I talk about. This commission, I remember, I looked back, I think even before I was on council, I served on this commission. And I remember when I talked to Dr. Banister and the purpose of the commission. Now, it was for a short time, but I remember what their mission was. I don't agree with everything that they do, but they do have some very good, um, programs that they have helped with youth and other things as well. So, I mean, I agree with the mayor. Let's have it quarterly. Let's look at the bylaws. We're in charge of seeing who we want to be on the commission. To be very honest, I haven't really been focused on who, you know, we've been appointing the people on the commission, but maybe we need to look at that. But I do think that there is a purpose for the commission. I remember talking to Dr. Banister about this commission, and I remember being on this commission, actually, um, and, and seeing some of the things that they did. And in fact, I think it was one of the first commissions that I was on, even though it was for a very short time. So you can call me out, say I'm for sanctuary policies. You have an issue with people on the commission. There's people on the commission that don't like me. They talk about me all the time. But I do see a purpose for this commission, and I do some of the, see some of the things that are good. We as a council can change some of those things. And so for that, whatever you want to say, Councilmember Jorinsky, um, and say what I am not, um, I will be supporting to keep this commission and supporting the mayor's amendment.
Um, I have, um, uh, Councilmember Bergen, Hancock, um, and Jorinsky.
Mayor Muriel, I've had my hand up for some time now.
Okay. Yeah.
She actually goes as number one in the queue if you look at the hand order.
Very well. Uh, Councilmember Muriel.
Thank you. Uh, I mean, I feel like, um, Councilmember Jorinsky's comments kind of alluded to the, the true intention in trying to eliminate this commission. I think we're clear that this is one of our more active commissions, um, very involved, um, for a number of years. And, um, you know, I, I think, I, I don't understand why we'd get rid of it. Um, you know, I think it's been very clear that the, one of the callers mentioned the money or the, the value, rather, of the, um, money put in. So leveraging staff time to really leverage the time of professionals and subject matter experts and just volunteers, people who care in our community is really important. So, um, I would be in favor of keeping it as is, but, um, would also support, um, a middle ground if there isn't support for, um, maintaining it as in its current form.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this all started actually a couple of years ago. Councilmember Coombs and I were going to co-sponsor a resolution to consolidate some of our boards and commissions. We ended up not doing that, but it, I think council, if I recall, put together a, a resolution that directed the city manager to then look at the boards and commissions and see what was much more efficient so that we were not using staff time and so forth. So, um, this was on the list, and I believe it went to, um, whoever chairs the, that particular, um, policy committee that, that oversees boards and commissions. So it did go to that board. Um, I don't recall having any kind of issues with it, uh, when the recommendations were made. Um, city manager, you made that recommendation, did you not?
Um, no, I mean, it was identified as part of the discussion. It was not a city manager recommendation. It was going back to study session. It was discussed at study session and then, um.
But there was a whole list of recommendations presented to us.
Yes.
Okay, where'd that come from?
It was part of the discussion of council at study session.
Okay, so, so the consensus of the study session from the council members was that those were the boards to be considered for elimination, and those were approved to be put forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, um, and y- you know, I don't know how this vote's going to go, um, whether there's real value to this commission or not. I think it's, um, it's been maybe hijacked in terms of what the mission should be. Um, if it moves forward, um, I do think significant changes to the bylaws need, need to be made. I never heard of a commission that gets to spend money. Um, I was on C A B C for four years, which is a very critical board and commission as it makes recommendations to council on the budget. And do you know our budget? We, we didn't have a budget. We got s- maybe cookies once in a while for our meetings and some lemonade and a dinner when we, um, spent a whole workshop working together on the recommendations for council. Um, so a lot of work goes in if you're a C A B C member. And for, I don't know how, eh, when this, obviously before my time on council, whoever approved this commission to have a budget to be able to spend two thousand dollars for some nonprofit group, um, I heard they have a budget of nine thousand dollars a year. What the heck? Um, nobody else has that kind of discretion. And we have basically, as a council majority, have said that we are done with, um, funding nonprofits, but yet they just awarded two thousand dollars to a nonprofit. And the fact that they held a candidate forum that was partisan, um, is inexcusable. Um, and, and I don't even know why they would hold a candidate forum in the first place and be political. Um, so for me, um, I'm, I'm not in, um, support of the amendment nor the, or, or I will be supporting elimination.
Okay, uh, a quick question for the city attorney. That is, if this amendment passes, uh, could I offer another amendment that would, uh, require, uh, staff to come up with an appointment process similar to that of the C A B C for, that its members are appointed by specific council members?
So.
Would that be worse?
What I, what I would tell you, Mayor, is, yeah, if the amendment passes, you could offer another amendment. But it sounds like if that's the direction the council would like to go, we're going to have to come back for another reading anyway, um, because it's going to be a substantial change. And so what I would recommend is, if that's the direction of councils, we come up with what we need to do for the final version of the ordinance, so we're not doing it on the fly, and then bring it back, uh, for another council meeting in the future. Um, kind of like what we did, you know, with some of, some of the other, uh, ordinances that we brought forward. But that would be my recommendation because this is a, this is a, this is a rewriting of the ordinance that we're looking at.
Good. Uh, Councilmember Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I do have some concerns, um, which I will echo, uh, with that Councilmember Bergen has raised with regards to his commission. Um, I was not aware that, I don't, I haven't been on council long enough for us to have taken a vote on these members, but what I have observed in their meetings and their, the timber and the tone and the activity, it has been highly partisan and suspect. Um, I don't have a dog in this fight, so retribution is not in my wheelhouse. I had originally thought that this was going to be a cost-saving measure combining sub, you know, consolidating committees. And frankly, I think, um, as, as the way things stand right now, I'm very concerned on as to how this can, uh, commission operates.
Councilmember Jorinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilmember Bergen, I appreciate everything, um, that you said. You essentially said everything that I said, but because you say it with less tone, um, no one's going to yell at you. Um, I, uh, I, I, I mean, I agree. The, the fact that they have a budget of, of nine thousand dollars a year. Um, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, I like your, your, your idea of making it council appointees. But, um, Jason, it is council that, that votes to appoint these members, but they bring forward, they go through the commission first in an interview process, and then, and then that's who comes forward, who the commission wants to move forward is who they bring forward to council to vote on. Am I correct?
I will let Katie correct me, but yes, typically what happens is they post, uh, they go through the applications. The board will, if there's a vacancy, the board will then interview for that vacancy. They'll come forward with a recommendation from the, um, board or commission on who they're recommending for appointment. Um, I do believe that the rest of the candidates are included in that, but that the recommendation from the board, uh, is what, is what is brought forward along with just the other candidates who applied.
Right, thank you. And, and so we've had issues with this in the past. So the only, the only appointees that are being brought forward is who the members of this commission want, uh, want to put in front of us. Um, you know, that, and, and we've had issues with this in the past, and we've seen issues with this in the past. Again, the fact that they, um, you know, held and promoted, um, which Councilmember Coombs failed to mention in all of her criticisms of me, um, they held and promoted a partisan candidate, um, gathering. That alone, right there, should be automatic, uh, grounds for termination of, of this commission. Um, this commission has become highly partisan, uh, highly filled with activism. Um, and, and again, we have voted time and time again on this council to not fund nonprofits. And then we find out that they are giving money to nonprofits. They have gone against what this council stands for time and time again. So to call this retribution, to call this anything but, but what it is, um, is, is nuts to me. If, if every member of this council looks at the behavior of this commission, they have gone against everything we say we stand for, a majority of us anyways, everything we say we stand for, and everything we say that we believe. Um, so, so I, I don't understand, um, I, I, I don't understand why we would, um, keep this commission. I think that this commission in its current capacity needs to be eliminated. I do like the idea of making it a council appointee, um, commission. I, I, I would be willing to, to look at that. Um, but I think in its current capacity, I think that there's so many changes that need to be made to this commission, whether we talk about the bylaws, the rules, the appointment process. Um, I think it's a complete wash. We need to completely get rid of it and, and rebuild it, um, you know, and, and create the statement and create the bylaws and create the rules and create the appointment process. Um, I don't think, you know, trying to hold it together with ten amendments is. Um, I don't think, you know, trying to hold it together with ten amendments is, is the correct way to go about this.
Sure, I'm gonna defer to the city attorney at this time.
Mayor, I have my hand up next.
Yeah, just.
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney.
And so I, I, I shared my screen, uh, members of council and the mayor. I wanted you to see the ordinance, right? I, again, no dog in the fight. I just wanna show you what is in the city charter now, or sorry, the city code, sorry, the code about their authority. So this is another area uh, that would need to be changed with the further orders. And this goes back to nineteen seventy-nine. So they are one of the few commissions based on city code that can, can expend and donate money.
Right.
They said, but so I just wanna make that clear that, that this is the other area that you guys would have, yeah, exactly.
I said that, actually.
Okay, um, yeah.
Yeah, so I said that earlier, that it's by their bylaws, that they have the ability to spend that money. And I don't know what council um, authorized that in the past when no other, no other boards or commissions have that authority. My, I would like to make a substitute motion that we delay this uh, vote today so that whoever, I don't know who wants to bring it back, but somebody bring it back with some parameters. Um, because we've seen, we, it sounds like there is a little bit of consensus on maybe restructuring it somewhat. So that is my substitute motion is to delay it so that we can restructure it.
I second that motion.
It's okay, it's a move by councilmember, a substitute motion moved by councilmember Bergen, uh, seconded by councilmember Jorinsky. Let me just say, when I was on the, back when the earth was cooling, I was on the commission. And city council at that time, and the practice no longer exists, but would give an appropriation to the commission. And the commission would then, uh, then all the um, nonprofits would come before the commission. And the commission would then decide uh, the allocation of those resources that was given by council. And, and it was unilateral uh, that um, uh, that it didn't go before council uh, for ratification. So um, the um, before us right now is the um, Bergen substitute amendment um, discussion. On the Bergen substitute amendment. Um, we are on, if, okay, so any speaker should be uh, to the Bergen substitute amendment, which is to table this.
And come back with recommendations.
And come back with recommendations. Um, um, let's see. Um, Councilmember Coombs. To the Bergen substitute.
Are we voting? Is it in the thing?
Well, I, 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 we're in discussion right now on the Bergen substitute. And so people are just speaking specifically to the Bergen substitute, not to anything else. And the Bergen substitute is to table this uh, until, uh, do you have a date certain?
Uh, let's see, how much time do we need?
You, you could table it until it gets pulled off the table or we can set it to a date certain through a continuance. So it's however you wanna do it.
And just for, you are bringing the other boards of commissions back. You all, you all continue those to September twenty-second. So if you want it with the other boards or commissions, you could do it with twenty-second. Or if you want more time than that, you could do another date certain.
Um, let me see, oh, September twenty-second is the next one? So that gives us some ti- yeah, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
So the motion is now to continue this until the September twenty-second um, uh, meeting, is that right? Councilmember Bergen, just wanna make sure that, okay.
And my second stands on that, Jorinsky.
Okay, um, further discussion on the Bergen substitute. Councilmember Rayo, do you have comments to the Bergen substitute? You have your hand out.
Oh, I think you.
I thought you recognized me and then you like unrecognized me. I don't really know.
Okay, Councilmember Coombs, to the Bergen amendment, substitute amendment.
Yeah, so this is to the amendment, right? Because the conversation is also about all this stuff that needs to be changed. I did just wanna clarify a couple of things. There are other commissions that have a budget. Um, the business advisory board has a budget. Um, actually, they all have.
This is really not to the, the, the question, that's not to the question before us. The question before is simply uh, continue it to that date. It's not to debate. That, that is just, are you for against the Bergen amendment? That's all we're discussing.
It's, and it's a, it's a substitute motion. It's not an amendment because we're not, we.
Substitute motion.
Sorry, yeah.
Does anybody else wish to address a substitute motion? Um, Councilmember Rayo, your hand is up.
Um, thank you. Um, City Attorney Schulte, I just wanna uh, clarify what, what determines whether or not it's to the substitute motion, because I, I thought that was relevant.
So the substitute motion was made and seconded. So now we're talking about the substitute motion about whether or not this is what council's direction is going to be on this. If this fails, then we're back to the amendment that Mayor Kaufman presented. That fails and we're back to the ordinance.
The, the question before is just to, just to continue it to a date certain, which is what, September twenty-second? That's all.
Yep.
It's either you're for or against that. Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, and the point of doing that is so that input can be given to re, you know, just to make those recommendations. So whatever, if you have strong feelings one way or the other, how it should be, if they still should have a budget or not, it, that can be in the recommendations when it brings, when it comes back.
To the Bergen substitute.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, seeing no further discussion, uh, call for the question on the Bergen substitute motion to continue to September twenty-second.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jorinsky.
I'm a yes, uh, Katie Hancock.
I think the motion passes unanimously to adopt or to continue item thirteen B to the September twenty-second council meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, point of order.
Uh, Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion under item sixteen um, and per the city attorney, we can ratify at the start of our next meeting. Uh, the motion I'd like to make is to begin city council meetings five minutes after the public comment listening session ends, but no earlier than six ten P M.
Second.
Uh, is that in order, City Attorney?
It, it, yes, this can't happen at this point. And because it's a suspension of the rules still, it does require a seven, seven votes to pass, but as long as we ratify at the beginning, and as Councilmember Gardner stated, we ratify is fine. But basically, we had to give a date, a time certain. So it's gonna be, if we finish at six oh four, like we did today, we still have to wait till six ten. So people will know they have to be on at least at six ten, so they wouldn't miss the meeting. But if it goes longer, it's fine. As long as we start on or after six ten P M, that motion is appropriate if it passes.
Well, I was, can you restate your motion? I'm sorry, Councilmember Gardner.
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, I move to begin city council meetings five minutes after the public comment listening session ends, but no earlier than six ten P M.
Okay, we can, uh, so, but we can handle, I thought we always had to have very specific time. It was published in advance.
So this is, so again, it, the only, the only thing that the open meetings law act requires is that people know when to, when to log in or when to come to the council meetings. We're giving, look, if they're there by six ten, they're not gonna miss the meeting, right? There's no, the council meeting cannot start any earlier than six ten P M, but it can go longer. We don't have to start at six ten. We can always start after that, but as long as people are in the chambers or they're online, depending on the format, by six ten, we're, we're covered by open meetings.
But nearly by six forty-five.
Okay, question before us is, uh, okay, is the Gardner amendment, uh, or Gardner motion? Uh, uh, who, uh, it was moved by Councilmember Gardner, who seconded it? I'm sorry.
And, and Coombs has her hand up.
Uh, who seconded the Gardner motion? Uh, Councilmember Bergen, uh, Councilmember Coombs. Uh, to the Gardner motion.
Yeah, so I just, yeah, my question is only, why don't we just resume having public invited to be heard during the meeting? If we're gonna, um, cause that would allow us, that would have allowed us today to just go ahead and continue on with the meeting as soon as all the speakers were done. This seems like a lot of shenanigans and machinations and procedures and, oh, maybe the meeting might start at this time or that time just to maintain this public comment listening session instead of having public invited to be heard.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, uh, call for the question on the Gardner motion.
Mayor, sorry.
No, Councilmember.
There was a comment from staff in the chat that ten minutes between public comment and council meeting would be preferable um, for them to get everything switched over.
Do you have a friendly amendment?
That's fine.
Does that require?
Are you okay with that?
Uh, and I'm the second and I'm okay with that as well.
Very well. Okay, um, uh, we're voting on the Gardner motion as amended. Uh, further discussion? I see none, call for the Gardner uh, motion as amended. Call for the question.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jorinsky.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor Ochess.
I'm a yes, Katie Hancock. Yes.
Thank you. Then motion passes with ten yes votes, one no votes from Councilmember Coombs to begin council meetings ten minutes after public comment listening session ends, but no earlier than six ten P M.
Yeah. Uh, reports, uh, Councilmember Coombs.
Sorry, Mayor. Um, no report.
Councilmember Gardner? No report. Councilmember Jorinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended the Alta grand opening in Ward Six. Um, this was a development that had a very tough time um, getting off the ground and getting opened. Um, the development actually burned down partially, uh, so was happy to attend this um, grand opening and, and see that they um, saw the project all the way through. Um, after several constituents reached out to me um, about trash in their park. Um, you know, Pro's, our Pro's department does what they can, but they have a large city um, to clean up. Um, with the help of councilmember Sundberg, we arranged our own Highlands Hollow Park um, cleanup event. And we had several uh, neighbors and residents come out um, and help clean up. It was pretty cool. Some teenagers in the neighborhood came out and helped clean the area up. I thanked Pro's very much for supplying um, the trash grabbers, the trash bags, the gloves, safety vests. Um, it was really pretty cool. I also helped organize an animal shelter golf tournament fundraiser because I am committed to continuing to find um, private funding for our animal shelter. Um, and thus far, it looks like a little over a thousand dollars um, was raised. That will go a long, long ways um, in helping them with their Amazon wishlist and the needs that they um, have at the animal shelter. Um, there was an agenda item tonight, item twelve A, the court administrator reporting to the city manager. Um, I think this is a terrible, terrible letdown um, of one of our city employees. I think that this is uh, discrimination. I think that um, this was brought forward, the sponsor of this, I think, had a personal vendetta. Um, I think this was absolutely a personal matter. Um, and I am very ashamed of our city um, attorney's office for not responding uh, to our court administrator's um, attorney and at least creating a dialogue around this. Um, you know, this, this court appointee is the only female that we have. Um, she was um, denied deferred comp when we hired her and the two male uh, appointees hired after her were given that deferred comp. So I fully expect the taxpayers of Aurora um, to have to pay something out on this um, and that this will go forward to a lawsuit. Um, I think this is very sad ultimately. Um, and I believe it is a breach of her contract. I think there, again, I think um, she was completely lied about. Um, Councilmember Sundberg has had many conversations at this point now with Michelle Crawford and others to get to the bottom and get to the truth of this. The truth is out. Um, Councilmember Sundberg has that truth. And um, again, I think that our court administrator is doing a wonderful job. And um, I think it is shameful uh, how this vote went down tonight. Um, and it saddens me that the taxpayers of Aurora will have to uh, bear a burden of, of paying out on a lawsuit on this.
Councilmember Gardner.
All right, so uh, last, last fr- uh, last Saturday, I had uh, my first uh, uh, ride along with the battle line. Chief, uh, five, uh, Mr. Anthony, yeah, pirate station eleven, uh, to better understand the, you know, how our uh, Aurora Fire Rescue Department operates. And that was the cool one. That was my first ride. And then also um, I do attend the uh, Aurora Fire Rescue promotional ceremony. Uh, alongside with uh, Mayor Kaufman. That was uh, very interesting to see our, you know, department, uh, you know, reactive and see, you know, people getting in promotion. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Rayo.
Thanks, Mayor. Just uh, letting folks know that I've resumed um, my monthly town hall after a uh, summer break. Um, so the first one back will be this Thursday at Morehead and I hope to see you there.
Uh, Councilmember Sundberg. Mayor, for ten.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, let's see, enjoyed the neighborhood cleanup of Highland Hills Park. Great uh, job by staff and Councilwoman Jorinsky to get that organized, uh, fun meeting with the neighbors there early in the morning and, and getting the park cleaned up. Glad to see the I two twenty-five hump at near second and sixth is, is being repaired. It's going to be a bit of an inconvenience for nighttime drivers. Uh, you know, when people had combined very excessive speed with that, uh, it was a deadly mix. So that's getting taken care of. Uh, very glad to see Aurora Police Department out there conducting pedestrian type um, interventions, writing some citations. Man, the, the scooters out there, the electric bikes are, are ubiquitous and faster than a bat out of hell in there. Uh, there's injuries waiting to happen. And I, I suspect our, our uh, emergency rooms are seeing some of that. I can't believe how fast these, these scooters are going down my street, uh, often with no helmet on. So I, I, I hope our, I hope our schools like APS are really teaching safety to our young kids when it comes to these types of things. Uh, cause they are just getting faster. Uh, that's about all I have. Thank you, sir.
To uh, Councilmember Medina.
No report, sir.
Councilmember Hancock.
No report tonight, Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
But I do wanna say congratulations to uh, Count uh, um, Councilmember Sundberg on his thirty-fifth anniversary of his business and he, we had, we went by there over the weekend and axe throwing. I actually hit the target, which was kinda cool. So sorry, sorry, Councilmember Lawson, but congratulations, Councilmember Sundberg.
Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just been kinda focused on this special legislative session. Um, the lawmakers are convened today for the fifth day of the Colorado Special Session debating funding for rules, health insurance, and measures to protect Planned Parenthood from potential state-level Medicaid cuts. As a reminder, the purpose of the current special session is to address the substantial budget shortfall of roughly seven hundred and fifty million dollars. So that special session is continuing. Aurora's le- lead legislation, House Bill twenty-five, one, 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 two. Councilmember Hancock is basically the sponsor and the mayor, um, and we all supported that as well. The local authorities enforce vehicle registration is now in effect. Um, Congress is still in recess for the next few days and will return after Labor Day to address the F Y twenty-six budget when they return. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just, uh, first I want to um, extend my sincere condolences uh, to the family of the two very young people that passed away in a very tragic um, traffic accident. Um, and also to the Grandview High School community. Um, one of the um, the young ladies that was um, that was killed um, was a senior at Grandview High School and the other had just graduated Grandview. Um, it was, they were both on a motorcycle and um, and unfortunately speeding. Um, it was just a horrific accident and, and those that witnessed it, I think, um, will have to uh, you know, deal with that emotionally for a long time. Um, and then um, I attended, of course, I chaired the P E D meeting, had that um, over the last couple of weeks. Um, I had our E four seventy executive board meeting and board meeting, also the region nine opioid meeting. And then on top of that, um, two afternoons spent um, doing um, R F Q interviews for the opioid uh, facilitation um, process. And attended, of course, the water policy committee, had staff meeting, management meetings over that timeframe. And then lastly, um, I attended the open space meeting, board meeting, and then also a tour of. And then lastly, I attended the open space meeting, board meeting, and then also a tour of Ponderosa preserves. And I learned a lot from very passionate and committed board members. So, thank you.
Well, thanks, everybody. And I would encourage, since I'm, the mayor's full-time position, so it's, if I were to go over my schedule, I think we'd be here tomorrow until tomorrow. So I just want to encourage people to look at my Facebook page, go to Mike Kaufman Facebook, and it talks about some of the major activities that I have going. Thanks, everybody. Seeing no further business before the Aurora City Council, we are adjourned.
Bye.